Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Daniel Kater.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order the September 5th, 2019 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Kater.
Here.
Commissioner Coman.
Here.
Commissioner Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Bowers.
Here.
Commissioner Lomas. Commissioner Rednick.
Here.
Commissioner Wade.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zoning changes, general plan amendments, and much more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project, along with their recommendation to the commission, who will approve an item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Our goal is to carefully consider each project and make a decision that will balance individual rights with public welfare and the general well-being of our community. We will now receive public statements. This time is reserved for anyone wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the public hearing portion of the agenda. Please note, if you are here for Items 5A through 5D, or for Item 6A, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing no one wishing to make public statements, we will now move on to consent calendar non-public hearing items. These items typically involve housekeeping or administrative matters that do not require a public hearing. Does any commissioner wish to remove a consent calendar non-public hearing item for separate If not, may I have a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent calendar non-public hearing items? Commissioner Coman.
I'll make a motion to approve Item 4A, the minutes from the August 15th, 2009 commission meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Coman. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Bowers. Commissioners, please cast your vote. Thank you. We will now move on to consent calendar public hearing items. The next agenda section includes public hearing items that are considered routine or non-controversial. These items have been reviewed by staff and are conditioned in accordance with the requirements of the municipal code. The planning director will read the items on the consent calendar to ensure that the public has an understanding of the item to be considered. If you would like to speak on the item, please come forward after the items are read and ask that the item be removed for discussion. If items are not removed by a member of the public or a commissioner, the commission will vote in one motion without further comment. Mr. Coyle, will you read the consent calendar public hearing items on tonight's agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. On tonight's agenda, we have Project 5A, which is an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 7152, which is a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project to build 171 single-family homes located on the northeast corner of South Fairfax Road and East Wilson Road. Project 5B is an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 7153, which is a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project to build 180 single-family homes located on the north side of East Wilson Road, about a quarter-mile east of South Fairfax Road. Project 5C is vesting tentative parcel map 12340, which is a proposal to subdivide 14 acres into seven parcels for future commercial development located on the south side of Panama Lane, about a quarter-mile east of Wyble Road. And Project 5D is an amendment to Title 17 of the Bakersfield Municipal Code, which is a proposed amendment to several sections of Title 17 for the purpose of regulating accessory dwelling units. This concludes my reading of tonight's consent calendar public hearings' agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. At this time, I will open all of the consent calendar public hearing items. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on a consent calendar public hearing item? Again, this is not the time to take testimony, just request that it be moved to the public hearing portion of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Kenneth F. Hirsch. I am a Stockdale Estates Community Action Committee member. And the paper referred to Swackos way back in the days of Hagen Oaks. I see you get a reaction. And I was proudly a member of that group that time, helping putting the marketplace together. I'm here to speak on Item 5D.
Thank you.
From our community...
At this time, we'll just move it to the public hearing portion, and then we'll conduct a hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other members of the community, or of the audience, wishing to move an item from consent to the public hearing portion of the agenda? Please step to the mic, state your name, and please state which item you'd like to move.
My name is Gary Simmons, and I'd like to address Item 5D and enter into a public hearing conversation with that regarding moving forward and asking for an extension of time, so that the community of Bakersfield and the City of Bakersfield...
That would be part of the public hearing, would be the request.
That goes to the public.
Yeah, we're just requesting to move it.
I'm done?
Yeah, for right now. We look forward to your comments in the next section. Thank you. Are there any other community members wishing to move an item from consent to public hearing? Seeing no other members of the audience, are there any commissioners wishing to move an item from consent to public hearing? Okay, at this time, I will close the public hearing on Items 5A, 5B, and 5C, and move Item 5D to the public hearing portion of the agenda. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent calendar public hearing items 5A, B, and C? Oh, was it 5B or 5D?
5D. They're both related to accessory dwelling units.
Question my hearing, yeah.
We need to ask him again, because he did say about an extension of time, and that refers to Item 5B, so...
I think he was requesting an extension of time to discuss 5D.
To consider the...
Is that accurate, sir? Accessory dwelling units?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes, so, may I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent calendar public hearing items 5A, 5B, and 5C?
I make that motion to approve Items 5A, B, and C.
Thank you, Commissioner Bell. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Coman. Commissioners, please cast your vote.
Motion passes with Lomas and Wade absent.
Thank you. We will now move on to public hearings. We have two hearings tonight. It is now time to hear any consent calendar public hearing items removed from that portion of the agenda, which was Item 5D. And then we have a public hearing on Item 6A. Before we begin, I'd like to explain how the hearings will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. After those in favor have spoken, those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all those in favor have spoken. If we have those in favor and those opposed, each side will then be given a five-minute to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. If you'd prefer, written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a clear and concise way. We'll begin tonight's public hearings with Item 5D. Mr. Coyle, would you please provide us your staff report?
Yes, sir. Dana, could you bring up the ADU presentation, please? At the September 5th, 2018 City Council meeting, Councilmember Smith made a referral to the Planning and Development Committee to review permitting of second dwelling units, or more commonly referred to as accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. On July 9th, 2019, the Planning and Development Committee was presented information on ADUs and new Assembly and Senate bills being considered by the state. The committee accepted public input from the development community and directed staff to prepare a full draft of an updated ordinance. Under state law, an ADU is defined as "an attached or a detached residential dwelling unit which provides complete independent living facilities for one or more persons. It shall include permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation on the same parcel as the single-family dwelling is situated." Under state law, ADUs are subject to the following regulations. Total area of floor space shall not exceed 1,200 square feet. The lot must be zoned "single-family" or "multifamily" and include a proposed or existing single-family dwelling. ADUs may be rented separate from the primary residence, but may not be sold separate from Before we get to fees, one more. State law allows local jurisdictions to enact ordinances to impose additional standards on ADUs, including but not limited to owner occupancy, size, and parking requirements. Chapter 17.65, Second Dwelling Unit, was added to the Bakersfield Municipal Code in 1994. To date, the City of Bakersfield has not adopted any separate ordinances related to On the subject of fees, we are subject to state law and also local city standards. Under state law, fees charged for the construction of accessory dwelling units shall be determined in accordance with Chapter 5 and Chapter 7 of the Mitigation Fee Act, which establishes the procedure for a local agency to levy fees for construction or improvement of public facilities on approval of development projects. The city has adopted various ordinances and resolutions establishing the formulas for certain types of fees that comply with the Mitigation Fee Act by determining the impacts of the new development on the city's infrastructure. Two examples of that are traffic impact fees and sewer connection fees. I know this chart is very difficult to read, but it is a breakdown of fees by single-family home, duplex, and ADU. There are three pending bills in the state legislature. Assembly Bill 68 has two provisions, one which says there is no minimum lot size for ADUs, and another which says the ADU application must be ministerially approved within 60 days rather than 120 days. Assembly Bill 881 says that you cannot require owner occupancy, and you cannot impose parking standards if you are within a half-mile of public transit. And finally, Senate Bill 13 has a number of provisions. You cannot require a replacement parking spot for a garage conversion. You cannot require owner occupancy. The project must be ministerially approved within 60 days rather than 120 days. If an ADU is less than 750 square feet, the unit will be charged zero impact fees. If the ADU is equal or greater than 750 square feet, they shall be charged 25% of the impact fees otherwise charged for a new single-family dwelling on the same lot. Staff proposed a number of revisions to the ordinance. One provision says if an ADU is a garage conversion or within half a mile to public transit, no additional parking spaces are required, and that is consistent with Assembly Bill 881. Changes to Section 1765 would remove the requirement for an existing dwelling to be owner-occupied, which is consistent with Senate Bill 13. If an ADU size, or the ADU size would increase from 30% to 50% of the floor area of the existing dwelling if attached, if detached, the ADU would not exceed 1,200 square feet. And finally, ADUs are not subject to traffic impact fees or park fees, and shall pay sewer connection fees based on the number of fixtures. The first reading of this new ordinance occurred on August 14th, 2019. We are here tonight for a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission. We have a second reading of the ordinance by City Council scheduled for September 11th, 2019, and if approved, the ordinance would become effective on October 11th. Staff recommends adoption of the ordinances. This concludes my staff report on the ADU.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. The public hearing on this item is open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Russell Johnson with Common Sense Consulting. I also happen to be the treasurer of the Kern County Home Builders Association. Provide a little context and history for your commission. This is not the first public hearing on this item. First, to give you some background, this item was referred to Planning and Development by Councilmember Smith, as you heard in the staff report. There was a very robust discussion that took place at that meeting. But prior to that, our association delivered seven bullet points to members of the Planning and Development Committee, and also to the City Manager's Office, about items that we thought would be beneficial as a way to improve housing stock in the community and also provide a diverse product that is desired in the marketplace. So what occurred was, it went to Planning and Development, passed on a 3-0 vote out of Planning and Development. Then it went to City Council, passed on a 7-0 vote through City Council. So here we stand before you today. Couple items I want to bring to your attention. The ordinance needs to be updated, it needs to be more in line with state law. That was one of our points that we brought up. Also, we had the whole history of that this has been heard, this has been discussed, the council's weighed in, once, not once, but through a committee as well, so partially For our builder members that build new construction, this is really a significant timing-wise that this were to occur today. First of all, for the builder members, there's a huge demand in the marketplace for folks that want to come in and build a mother-in-law's quarters, an accessory dwelling unit, and they're coming to our builder members, and they're saying, "Hey, this is the product we want to be able to purchase." But the way that the fees were structured, and the way that the process was in the city, it just didn't work, and people couldn't qualify for loans to build the product that they wanted to purchase. So as a result, that's what initiated a lot of this discussion. So here we stand, our builder members are trying to deliver a product where people want to be able to have accessory dwelling units, where an additional family member can potentially live with them. That's a big push as to why we're doing this. But also, it's critical that this item move tonight, and we proceed with the schedule that staff outlined. And here's why. The California Green Building Code kicks in January 1st, 2020. And for those of you that aren't aware what the California Green Building Code will do, estimates from our association are that we're looking at cost increases to comply with the California Building Code are anywhere from $30,000 to $50,000. That's already going to impact the amount of people that are going to qualify for loans on new construction. What this will allow our members to do, will allow them to go, they'll be able to pull permits before January 1st, 2020, and deliver this product to the people that want to be able to purchase this product today. California's in a housing crisis. You've heard, the state is going predatory, and it's actually come after cities that can't meet their housing element. For this, this is a way to provide additional housing stock, it's a way to provide what the marketplace is desiring. And also, I want to address the non-owner-occupied issue. That is important, because for the builder members, technically, you know, when they build a home, they're not the owner, right? So they're going to be selling it to someone, right? But we need that mechanism, so that as the people that own the property, they're the non-owner-occupied. Also, I want to point out that as we get into this, there's another item that I think is important, and that is this, is that where the ordinance is today, it contained four points that were recommended by members of the council to move forward and be part of the ordinance. For us, we had seven. So our association wasn't necessarily 100% on board with what came out of Planning and Development, but it was enough that we said, "You know what? We'll work with the council, we can live with it, it's something that we think is moving the needle in the right direction." And one of the things that really came up in the council discussion and Planning and Development, that's critical for your commission to understand, is that as they were looking at the changes to state law, these four bullets were all things that either are in state law now, or are going to be in state law when these bills pass. And for your information, SB 13 is going to go for its third reading next week, and all indications are, is that bill's going to pass. It's passed every hearing, so these things are going to be effective January 1st, 2020. But the critical thing for our members is that the changes to the city ordinance be made and move forward tonight, so that we can deliver this product for our builder members before the Green Building Code kicks in and housing is still affordable. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the audience wishing to speak in favor of the project? Please state your name and proceed.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Dave Demahowski, I'm the executive officer of the Home Builders Association of Kern County. I just wanted to very briefly add to what Mr. Johnson said. The City of Bakersfield is issuing about the same number of single-family building permits today as it was 20 years ago, little bit more, but just about the same amount. Our population has doubled in that timeframe. Apartment construction is lagging, and as Mr. Johnson pointed out, the regulatory cost is pushing housing prices beyond the reach of first-time buyers and working families. City Council just two weeks ago, three weeks ago, adopted some very aggressive economic development goals without adequate housing and a range of prices and housing types. The city's not going to achieve any of its economic development objectives. So we would urge your prompt approval of this item, and appreciate your listening to our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the audience wishing to speak in favor? All right, if there are no others wishing to speak in favor, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Again, my name's Gary Simmons, and I didn't think I'd ever be before you again, after I was a few months ago, regarding political issues and development in our city. But the people that are proposing this, this is to benefit one industry only. This is to benefit the construction business, the real estate construction trade business. Those arguments are to sway you into thinking that we have a crisis. If we have a crisis, I need to see the data. If we have an emergency, I need to see the data. If our numbers are the same as they were 20 years ago, I need to see the data. We have a household median income of $56,000 a year in Bakersfield, California, equal to the national. Our household median price is right around $277,000 for a household median income of $56,000. This presentation is false and misrepresentative. We do not have a crisis in Bakersfield, California. It is presented to sway the vote of our city government. You can only go by the facts and the data that are presented by you, not political consultants that are hired with a title to make a presentation on top of an industry. We've experienced it already this year. It grows old. My concern, and our concern, I'm a member of the Stockdale community, of the action committee that we developed here about six months ago, when it came to an outside developer that was going to try to take millions of dollars out of his community, and we defeated that, because the truth came forward. The false and misrepresentation and the reason to convince you to vote a certain way was brought forward, and the transparency became very apparent. That's why we're here today. My concern is the 400,000 people that live in our city limits that know very little about this initiative. I didn't find out about this initiative until 24 hours ago. 400,000 other people in the city don't know about this. This affects 400,000 people. Seven people, our city councilman, which our city councilman, we have never met in person in Stockdale Estates. He refuses to show up and have a meeting with his constituents. Seven people have voted for this that represents 400,000 people in our city. I ask for a continuance. I ask to allow us to do what we need to do, whether it be social media, whether it be contacting all these people in these wards, we have the ability to do that. And educate them. They should have an educated mind, an educated decision. But right now, the 400,000 people are left out, for seven people and a couple builders that are only thinking about their individual profits. I've been in business 35 years. I understand about profit, but I'm not going to make it on the backs of people that are uninformed and uneducated. We need time to educate our community. We need time to communicate with our 400,000 people. I promise you, I will make that happen. That will happen, that's my promise to you. So that you receive more information... So that you receive more information, more educated input to this initiative, other than seven votes here and three votes there. I'm a little passionate about this, because I just found out about this in the last twenty-four hours. I talked to a couple of real estate brokers, they didn't know about this. I talked to people in our neighborhood, they didn't know about this. Gentlemen, the due diligence of our system worked very well for us the last time I was here. I depend on the due diligence and the common sense. I believe in what we're here for. I believe in the process. But in order for it to come up with a, with a good decision for the community, you need to be better informed, other than using the word crisis. California emergency doesn't work. I need facts, and I need data. This is a bunch of baloney.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Sir, were you wishing to make comments, or?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, just one quick comment.
May we have your name one more time?
Yeah, Kenneth Hirsch.
Thank you so much.
The thing that, like Mr. Simmons, I received probably notice of this whole affair probably seventy hours ago, and was very surprised. So right away, I contacted members of the local paper who cover, usually cover your community events and things of that sort, and they weren't aware of this thing coming up before you and the planning commission. Matter of fact, they weren't even aware of the amendment to the seventeenth article of the municipal code. Now that's, that says something. That says that here, a lack of transparency to the public, a lack of awareness to the public, and as Mr. Simmons said, not to repeat him, this needs to be extended, needs to be taken off the consent item, and needs to be given more time, so the public can respond. And I can tell you, out in our community, in the southwest, we're very strong. And the people out there, when they were approached, just to get a consensus of our people in general, they knew nothing about this project. So between the paper and the community, nobody knew anything about this coming up as a consent And I have, Mr. Chairman, I have a, so this is for the planning commission, I'll give it to the secretary.
Please bring it to the clerk, and she can distribute. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyway, I think those are the, the few points I wanted to make. It's a lack of transparency, it's a lack of making communication with the, the community. This article I'm handing out to you was published by Bob Price, an editorial, it's by a member of the Southwest Action Committee, and our Stockdale Southwest Action Committee, and I think it says it all, what our problem is. It describes a lot of the problems we have with communications, and zippity-doodah through all these things, you know, quite loosely. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no additional speakers, are there any commissioner questions for a member of the audience or staff? Remember, this is time to ask questions and not a time to give your opinion or discuss the item. Commissioner? Yeah. Okay. Seeing no commissioner questions, we will move into a rebuttal period. As we began, as we just heard from the opposition, we will provide a five-minute total time for those in favor of the project, to provide rebuttal comments to what they, what those in opposition have said. Please be aware, this is a five-minute total time for all speakers, so please be succinct without repeating remarks of previous speakers, to ensure that everyone wishing to, to provide comments has the chance to do so, as five minutes is the total time. So we'll begin with those in favor. Those in opposition wishing to speak may want to come closer to the microphone, so when it's your turn, we don't lose time in transit. But I will begin, Madam Clerk, if you could put a five minutes on the clock. A five-minute period for those in favor of the project to provide rebuttal comments.
Chairman Kader, members of the commission, thank you for the quick opportunity to rebut. Just want to point out, this item has been publicly noticed, both on the city planning and development committee agenda that occurred in July, I believe the date was July 13th, if I remember correctly. It was also publicly noticed and was heard on the city council agenda in August. Was it August, Dave? Yeah, in August. So these are items that are easily accessible for both the media and the community to be able to monitor. I'm very sensitive to the fact about the community being made aware of items. You know, when I was on the planning commission and also on the city council, we supported ways that we could help communicate to the public things that were going on, and put signage up when you have land use changing. So making sure the public is aware is very important, but these items are on publicly noticed agendas, and they've been out there, and this has been approved by the council, seven to zero. We just ask that we continue to move forward tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Three minutes and forty-five seconds remaining. If there's any other rebuttal comments in favor. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, I will close the rebuttal for those in favor, and move to provide a five-minute period for those in opposition of the, of the project to provide rebuttal comments. Again, five-minute total time, so please be succinct and make sure that everyone that wishes to speak has an opportunity to do so. Thank you.
I just want to restate some of my comments, that this is a city of Bakersfield, four-hundred-thousand-plus Mr. Johnson states that anybody and everybody had the opportunity to go on the internet or to go somehow to find this information. We found out in previous experiences, it just doesn't happen that easy. But that's a pass-through. My concern is that you do not have enough reliable information and facts to make a decision for the community of Bakersfield, California. My concern is you do not have the information. The building industry has hired a paid political consultant, which we've experienced in the past, to ram this forward with the urgency and the emergency of the building industry and the state of California's crisis. It's a false and misleading presentation. It's designed only to benefit the trade industry of building. This does not benefit the residents of Bakersfield, California. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional rebuttal comments? Seeing no additional speakers, give one last chance. I don't see anyone. Okay. I will now close the public hearing on this item and return to commission for comment and action. Commissioner Bell, are you? You're contemplating. To start off the conversation, Mr. Coyle, I think it might be helpful with the speakers to give a quick, just a quick overview of the process of when we as a city change our municipal code, what the process typically entails, just to kind of, I think there were some questions about transparency and about process, and I would just, I think it'd be beneficial for everyone in the audience just to kind of understand how things in the municipal code get updated. Mr. Uger might be a better...
Okay, so the typical process is exactly what we followed here. The item will be referred by a city council member at a city council meeting, and then it will be heard at a committee meeting. Depending on the type of item, it will determine which committee it goes to. Since this has to do with development of housing, it went to the planning and development committee, and it actually had two separate meetings at the planning and development committee, as was stated in Commissioner, or Planning Director Coyle's presentation. And then the next step would typically be a public hearing, and because of timelines and meeting schedules, we did first reading first and then public hearing, but every time we changed chapter seventeen, we have to hold a public hearing. And it can be either at city council or planning commission. And because the planning commission has an easier form for the public to access and longer speaking times, we typically hold the public hearings here. And also, when it's a planning and development item, that's exactly in your guys' wheelhouse to hear and discuss the item, and make any recommendations or comment to city council. The next step will be second reading at city council, which is currently scheduled for the September 11th meeting. So any comments made by the planning commission today will be incorporated and included in the packet for the city council members. After second reading, the ordinance will go into effect thirty days later. And so at the second reading, anybody that's still opposed to the project has another chance to speak during public comments at the city council meeting. So I think that sums up the general process.
Thank you, Mr. Uger. I appreciate that. We have Commissioner Bell starting us off with comments.
This is taking me a while to ponder. So I would, I would tell you, especially those in opposition, that this commission is very sensitive to the community, very sensitive to the process, very, very sensitive to those that would come in front of us and speak in opposition for any, any reason. And we certainly do note that you are concerned about the activism of this, of this group. However, my concern is that you didn't make a point as to why you were against this, other than a timeline. You didn't tell me exactly why you would be opposed to a second unit on a property. I'm aware that this process, second units are rarely approved in this city, and has been up for discussion for ten or fifteen years. Certainly not a new, a new item. So minus that, that you didn't, for me personally at any rate, give me a reason other than activism by a group that may or may not be accurate in their position, concerns me. Normally, you could say it's time, but I know, I'm on the other end of it, I know how we're always accused of moving too slow, not getting things done, not getting things done in a timely manner. So those are my comments, and I would have liked to have seen a few more facts on your end, as to what, what your opposition exactly is about a second home, or a mother-in-law's property, or, you know, those specifics. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Rudnick.
Thank you. I also see that it's a complicated issue, and aesthetics, I would assume, would come into play here at some point, and that's to each person's interpretation of aesthetics. I've always been a proponent of freedom of choice, and so to me, to not allow folks to do what they need to do for extended family, for parents, for children with disabilities, or however it's affected, I think is not a good service for us to deny. So in that regard, I, again, I don't understand all of your objections beyond a notification, but it does appear we've had a lot of notification. But I do see a lot of benefits to allowing folks to have the additional unit on their property. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rudnick. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you. I agree with Commissioner Bell and Commissioner Rudnick. The, the, I think the important thing is, is that we're reducing the cost of being able to add an accessory dwelling unit to your property. And so I think that's a plus for the, for the homeowners, so that if you do want to build a mother-in-law's quarters out in the backyard, you don't have to pay exorbitant fees to be able to accomplish that. The second thing is, I think that this is, this is more a matter of just riding the horse in the direction it's going. In other words, we're just trying to bring our city ordinances in line with action that's occurring at the state level. We may have to do some more of this as time goes on, but I, I don't see a drawback to allowing people to be able to build mother-in-law quarters and accessory dwelling units within their property, and the city stepping back and, and reducing the fees for those things. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Are there any other commissioner comments before I state mine? All right. Seeing none, I will just state that accessory dwelling units are kind of a, in California, they've been discussed for many years now, and I think, you know, California is a diverse region, there's large cities, there's small rural communities, and so I think, you know, the housing crisis throughout the state looks very different in each community. But I think one thing that I would applaud the effort of this revised ordinance is kind of clarifying a housing type that is becoming very popular and is becoming very practical to a lot of families. I think, as mentioned by speakers, we're a community of four-hundred-thousand people now, and I think those four-hundred-thousand people do not all live the same life, and do not all have the same family dynamics, and do not all have the same economic situation. And I think, I appreciate, not only from a housing crisis, housing stock, number of units, but from also a family situation where multiple grown family members want to, to share the expense of a house, but can't afford independent housing. I think I represent Ward Two, and I think existing neighborhoods within our city, it provides an opportunity to, to provide new housing stock in sort of infill neighborhoods that are already built out, but maybe at a lower density than they could, you know, than the housing stock wants to be. So I think, and I, and then I think echoing off of Commissioner Coleman, I mean, a lot of what the language that was reserved is really just bringing in line with things that are happening at a state level, and I think that I applaud staff for being, keeping up with what is happening at, at a state level, so that we're not speaking one language and, you know, the state is speaking another. And so, one question I did have about was, was the parking portion of the ordinance? Because in reading how different communities have implemented accessory dwelling units, how the, kind of the different state bills implement, it seems like, you know, they give a credit for being close to transit, they give a credit for converting a garage and not requiring additional parking. To me, it seems a little strange that we would not require parking if you take over a garage for a unit, but then if you just build a unit, you have to provide a parking spot. It seems to me like you're either not park, parking many cars, or you're parking more cars than you'd need. And so I was wondering, I know other communities seeing it as an accessory unit, you know, they allow that parking credit to be kind of, you know, an on-street, showing that there's, you know, adequate curb space. And is there, was there any conversation through the development of this ordinance about, because to me, it just seems like you can take over a garage, which gets rid of a lot of parking, or if you don't do that, you have to add more parking, which to me just seems, like, because I think one thing this does well, or this is working towards, is kind of clarifying the process, you know, is this a second impact fee, is this an accessory unit? And I think to me that the parking section is still one that is a little bit unclear, as far as somebody coming, application, oh, this, but not this. And so I was just curious how that evolved in conversations.
I'll take this one, and Mr. Burns is here if we need more clarification. How it came up at the committee was a request to copy the pending state laws, regulations on parking. And so there's two different state laws...
on parking. And so there's two different state laws that address parking, SB 13 and 881. And one of those is the not requiring a replacement for a garage conversion, so we incorporated that. The other is not requiring an additional space if you're within a half mile of transit, so we incorporated that. So both of those that will become state law, if, assuming these pass next week, will already be in our municipal code. And it's something that if the, if the need shows at a future date that we're still not doing enough on a practical level, we can always address it and make changes to the code going forward.
Okay. So that, that aspect was related to compliance with state, pending state legislature. Okay. Thank you for the clarification. All right. Those are my comments. So are there any other comments before I ask for a motion? Then may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Item 5D, Amendment to Title 17 of the Bakersfield Municipal Code. That's enough.
I believe so. Mr. Egger is nodding in approval. So may I have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Bowers. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion passes with Lomis and Wade absent.
Thank you. We will now move on to our second public hearing for the evening, which is Item 6A. Mr. Coyle, would you please provide us your staff report on Item 6A?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Dana, could you return us, please, to the Planning Commission slideshow? General Plan Amendment and Zone Change 19-0035. Porter and Associates, on behalf of Cindy Henson, is requesting the General Plan Amendment and Zone Change. The project is located on 10.1 acres on the northeast corner of the Hosking Avenue Wybelle Road intersection. The applicant proposes 73,196 total square feet of neighborhood commercial, including a 5,500-square-foot gas station, five one-story buildings for shops, a 5,850 square-foot restaurant, and a 2,500-square-foot fast-food pad. Per the Bakersfield Municipal Code, any restaurants or eating places that would serve alcohol, provide entertainment, or require a drive-through would be required to obtain a conditional use permit from the city. The General Plan Amendment request would change the land use designation from low-medium-density residential to general commercial on 10.1 acres. The zone change request would change the zone district from residential suburban and one-family dwelling to neighborhood commercial on 10.1 acres. An environmental study was done for the project. Based on an initial study, the determination was made that the project with mitigation measures would not have a significant effect on the environment. Therefore, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. And things that were looked at in that MND include air quality, biological resources, cultural resource survey, and traffic. The city received 13 comment letters or emails prior to posting the agenda for this Planning Commission that are part of the staff report. We received comments from organizations like the Kent County Superintendent of Schools, Caltrans, the Division of Oil, Gas, and Geothermal Resources, Southern California Gas, and the State Clearing House. And none of them had any comments or concerns with the project. From the public comments, we determined that the majority of the issues were around things like traffic, crime, and public safety, property values, attracting the homeless, lighting, the sale of alcohol and proximity to a church, and the sale of alcohol and cigarettes and the proximity to a school. The city received five letters in opposition, more than 200 signatures in opposition, and more than 20 signatures in support after the posting, which have been placed at the dais for your consideration. Staff concluded that the project is consistent with surrounding development because neighborhood commercial is compatible with residential neighborhoods. Staff concluded that the project is consistent with the general plan because it provides a variety of neighborhood-level commercial services to residential areas. It's an example of infill development. It's located on a site greater than five acres, and the city encourages clustering of commercial activities at intersections. Staff concluded that the project is consistent with the zoning ordinance because the requested zone change is consistent with the requested general plan amendment, and, at the time of development, the project would be required to comply with the Bakersfield zoning ordinance and city development standards. Staff recommends adopting the mitigated negative declaration, approving the general plan amendment, and approving the zone change. This concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. The public hearing on this item is open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Hello, my name's Freddie Porter. Porter and Associates Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the Hensons and Arredondos, the property owners. Just like to say, the staff report does an excellent job of showing that this proposed neighborhood commercial use is consistent with the general plan and compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. It lists 16 different policies or goals of the general plan that are fulfilled by this use. It's in a, it's an infill project that's in an arterial arterial intersection. It's clustered near C2, this catty corner to it. So it kind of meets all those, that criteria that you're looking for, for a neighborhood commercial-type use. We think it's the highest and best use for the property. We agree with staff's recommendation to approve the project. My consultants and I will be available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other audience members wishing to speak in favor of the project? Please identify yourself and proceed.
My name is Ismael Arredondo, and this is my, my parents' property. But I'm also, I also live in the southwest on Stone Creek. I think this project is going to benefit not only the city, but a lot of our young youth that's going to get, get jobs from this. So, and I don't, I don't see how homelessness or crime is going to increase if we're going to increase the lighting and the population in that area.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the audience wishing to speak in favor of the project? Please identify yourself and proceed.
My name's Robert Mahan. I'm here to, just on behalf of the Henson family. I've known them most of my life. They're well embedded, four generations of farmers in the Maricopa Flat area. They're just good people, and they're here to stay. There's already dark sky rules that apply to this project. The neighborhoods surrounded are more of a walking neighborhood. Elderly neighborhoods live within the communities. And I just think it would be a great benefit to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the project? Seeing no other speakers in favor, are there any audience members wishing to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, first let me compliment you on you have fabulous air condition in this building. We're freezing.
We have little to do with that, but thank you.
We're going to have three speakers be, speak in behalf of the group.
Good evening. My name is Joe Jimenez. I am the president of the Wybelle Road Action Group, or RAG. My wife Linda and I have been residents of Bakersfield for over 16 years, all in the Stone Creek community. The Wybelle Road Action Group was established in 2003. It was created to preserve, protect, and serve the residential neighborhoods, along with maintaining the integrity of our community. David Polinsky and I are the third sets of leaders to lead this group. As longtime residents of this community, we all oppose this project. We have gone door-to-door throughout our community, letting people know about the proposed zoning change. We, along with volunteers, have gathered more than 250 signatures on petitions opposing this zoning change. Mailers have been sent out to all the nine neighborhoods that surround the proposed project site. Ninety-eight percent of all the homeowners we spoke to are against this project. The citizens in this area have invested money, time, and effort to maintain a certain lifestyle. They are hard-working, tax-paying, responsible citizens. As of today, we have received 53 mailers that has been returned, all opposing this project. And if I can give this to the secretary.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
This is already an established community. It makes no sense to rezone this area to commercial. You have many established businesses to the north and to the south of the proposed site. By changing this zoning, you will disrupt the lifestyle of thousands of families. And at this time, I'd like to ask all the homeowners who are in the audience to please stand if you oppose this project. Thank you for coming. Your decision today will impact an entire community forever. If you decide to change the zoning from residential to commercial, we believe it will bring the following. The homeless transient population in our community will increase, resulting in increased criminal activity, panhandling, public defecation, and trash in and around our neighborhoods. Traffic will increase, which will impact air quality, noise, and the risk to the children crossing the Wybelle and Hosking intersection to and from school. Additionally, lighting, alleyways, deliveries will severely impact the quality of life. With all due respect, I ask you to please respect the voices of all the homeowners who are opposing this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Please identify yourself and proceed.
Good, good evening. My name's Dave Morrison, and I am the immediate past president of RAG, which we all started back to stop the apartments on Wybelle. We feel that changing the zoning from residential to commercial will have a negative impact of all the neighborhoods around the area. The homeowners to the east and west across Wybelle Road from where they want to put in this project would have to deal with strip mall lights probably on all night long, traffic in and out of that strip mall all night long, and the constant noise and pollution of the added traffic, even though they say they don't see any more pollution, but I kind of can't figure that one out. One homeowner, as shows on that map up there, does not want to sell their property, and that's their prerogative. This would cause a serious problem for traffic flow on northbound Wybelle Road. We are already dealing with this on South Wybelle Road, where two houses, a wrecking yard, did not participate. Besides the traffic interruption, it causes a very significant safety problem for drivers turning left or going north on Wybelle from Adalian Rose Avenue. There already has been a homeless problem out there, and anybody that's in the case is not going to be, this would not impact us more, I don't know. The homeless already, there is a abandoned wooden shed on that property they want to develop. The homeless already tried to take that over and moved into that. East on Hosking, there is a empty house, and the homeless have basically ruined that house. It's all boarded up now. They tear down the board, and they board it up again, so that they're out there right now. Strip shopping centers, as this attracts homeless people, besides the already negative impact the strip would cause, we would have to put up people sleeping on the property at all hours, defecating and urinating outdoors on the property, vandalism, and carpetbaggers asking for handouts and standing in traffic areas and on islands. This is in addition to the litter and the shopping carts that end up everywhere. There's a school bus stop right south of the property. There are children walking to school and buses every day right past the property, in addition to the real safety problem from gas tankers, food distributor vans, refuse trucks, which back up a lot doing their job picking up dumpsters, and the customers driving across the sidewalk, entering and leaving the property where children walk. Would you want to expose your children to that safety problem twice a day and the drifters and litter and filth they, they cause? The plot plan we have been provided does not appear to address areas for the businesses to locate their dumpsters or take care of their trash, or enough area for refuse trucks to access the dumpsters. The plot plan also has an entry-exit driveway that seems awfully close to the signal on Wybelle Road, nor does it address the traffic on Hosking when it's expanded to three lanes, six lanes both ways, and the right-hand turn lane next to the curb where they want to develop. The plot plan shows that the lot does not want to sell as a slight bulge on Wybelle Road. If you look north about a couple hundred yards, you'll see where those two houses and wrecking yards are, or two houses are, are now. And that extends about 20 feet out in the Wybelle Road, causing it to go from two lanes north to one lane to two lanes north again. That's the same problem you would have right here. There are several owners of the area, this area, the strip mall wants to develop. There is concern that the residents, with the residents, that the real reason for the zoning change may not be develop the strip mall as they are promoting it. But to get the zoning change and allow them to sell the area to other developers. If this happens, what gets built there and when? Well, if the separate owners have a falling out and decide to go out on their own, then they could develop each commercial site they own on their own. What would go in then? So many people who, as you already have been, have been mentioned, that reside in the surrounding area are so concerned about the problems, they have 254 signed partitions opposing the project. Plus, we had a late mailing, we had to say on our, on our postcard, and we already got, how many, Dave, or Joe? Fifty-three back. So it would be so simple to establish, and with these gentlemen talked about the housing, we do have a housing problem, and it's just all over the state. So it'd be so simple to establish neighborhoods for single-family dwellings, which is already zoned for, just tie in the entry across Amazon, install the attractive wall like it did on the west side of Wybelle, and build a clean, quiet place for families to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the project? Please identify yourself and proceed. Thank you.
My name is David Polinsky. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, good evening. My wife Glor and I live in the Stone Creek track about a block away from the intersection of Hosking and Wybelle. We are both opposed to this general plan amendment zoning change. I am also vice president and treasurer of the Wybelle Road Action Group, and I'm speaking on behalf of many, many residents, as my fellow speakers have mentioned. I'll be focusing a little more on the facts and issues for why the Planning Commission should recommend denying this request. The request before your commission is a general plan amendment and a change in zoning to implement the requested commercial map code designation. The Metropolitan Bakersfield General Plan is a series of goals, policies, and implementation members, measures that form a blueprint for guiding the development of the city. In essence, it's a key tool for influencing the quality of life In essence, it's a key tool for influencing the quality of life and forms the basis for making land use decisions. In approving a general plan amendment, the request must be found consistent with all of the applicable goals, policies, and implementation measures of the general plan. A request that demonstrates compliance with only some of the applicable goals, policies, and implementation is said to be inconsistent and not in keeping with the city's blueprint for development. Inconsistent requests cannot be approved. In the general plan, in Chapter Two Land Use Element, in the first paragraph on page two dash four, it states, "In addition to promoting the formation of several large concentrated mixed-use centers, the plan also attempts to consolidate smaller neighborhood-serving commercial development by prescribing minimum distances between commercial parcels and by discouraging strip commercial development." Further down on that same page, it states, "Strip commercial and sprawling residential land use patterns which lack consolidation or focus are inconsistent and with the principles defined in the plan. It would appear to us that there is a great possibility for this land to be developed into strip commercial development and therefore would not be consistent with the general plan's principles and goals." In the city staff report contained in the materials for the June sixth meeting for this zoning change request, under the compatibility with Land Use Element, Staff Address Policies fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, twenty-six, and twenty-nine, and basically justifies the consistency of the project with those policies. What was not included in the report was analysis for policies twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-four, policies we believe the request is not consistent with. In reviewing the staff report for today's meeting, I noted the analysis of policies seventeen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty-B, seventy-eight, and eighty-six were added to the report. One of our questions is, is why was the evaluation of these policies not included in the previous report? Digging deeper, looking at Policy Twenty, staff is basically recommending this commission to make an exception for this request. Land Use Element Twenty states, "The depth of new commercial development shall be at least half the length of the street frontage. Exceptions may be made where existing development or physical constraints provide a more logical shape. Granting the exception could allow strip commercial development, especially if, for example, only one of the three property owners developed their property along Wybelle Road independently of the other two owners." Regarding consistency of the requests with Land Use Elements Twenty-one and Twenty-four, the analysis by staff is inconsistent and confusing. Back in 2002, zoning change zero-two dash zero-eight-eight-two for a very similar zoning change request for property located on the northwest corner of Wybelle-Hosking was submitted. The City Planning Department recommended against it. On December eighteenth, 2003, the Planning Commission voted seven to zero to deny the request. The applicant appealed to the City Council, and City Council unanimously denied the request on February eleventh, 2004. From materials that I found on the city's website for that council meeting, extracted the following, quote, "Staff recommended against general plan amendment zone change zero-two dash zero-eight-eight-two because it is inconsistent with commercial development policies Twenty-one and Twenty-four. These policies encourage a one-half-mile separation of new commercial sites from existing commercial sites and discourage extending commercial development along streets." City staff further stated that, quote, "There are several commercial sites within one-half-mile and six commercial sites located along Wybelle Road. In fact, across Hosking Road is a vacant eight-point-four-zero acre commercial site," end quote. Why is the city staff providing a recommendation for approval for this zoning change today? What has changed, we asked? Furthermore, the staff report for zone change nineteen dash zero-zero-three-five states that neighborhood commercial development is separated by point-five miles or more between other commercial designations. Using the city's GIS tool, which is online, I was able to measure distances between three existing commercial map code designations in the project site and found that they were only point-two-five, point-three-oh, and point-three-eight miles apart. Why is the city staff stated there isn't commercial designated property within one-half-mile when the city's GIS system clearly shows this not to be true? On our final issue is, the staff report prepared states that site access will be provided via Hosking Avenue and Wybelle Road, and that the developer is responsible for roadway improvements within the GPA area. As such, the report acknowledges a condition of approval require the developer to provide a fully executed dedication of Hosking Avenue and Wybelle Road to arterial standards for the full frontage of the proposed zoning change area, unless otherwise approved by the city engineer. The project will also be subject to city's policy for complete streets, which requires that all the transportation facilities for bicycles, pedestrians, et cetera, be considered. All sidewalks and pedestrian access throughout the development will be required in accordance with city standards. The report also goes on to state that Policy Twenty-nine of the general plan requires that automobile and truck access to commercial properties cited adjacent to designated residential parcels be located at the maximum practical distance from the residential parcel. A conceptual site plan was used in analyzing the request, however, no specific development is being considered at this time. It should be noted that the project site is not only a buts residentially designated land on its north and east side, but also surrounds a small residential site which fronts on Wybelle Road. It is not clear where a commercial driveway approach is to be located on Wybelle Road, which A is sufficient distance from Hosking Avenue, B maintains a maximum practical distance to the north and south of the residential island, maintains maximum practical distance from the residentially designated land along the project's north boundary. Additionally, how is the developer going to make the necessary dedication on Wybelle Road in front of the residential site it encompasses when they don't own or control it? Are we looking at another significant short jog in Wybelle Road? In summary, based on the foregoing information, we respectfully disagree with the city staff's conclusion that the project is consistent with all applicable general plan policies. The request would appear to be speculative in nature to facilitate the sale or one or more of the three owners' property for development by another party. Without an actual development proposal, how are the area property owners to be assured or be given the necessary assurances that their property will not be adversely affected? There are also issues with the staff analysis explaining how this project differs from the historical denial of additional commercial acreage at this intersection in the last twenty-eight, twenty years by both your commission and the city council. Consequently, without more information to substantiate the necessary findings for approval, we ask the Planning Commission to recommend to deny zoning change nineteen dash zero-zero-three-five. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Hi, my name is Charlie Choi, and I'd like to say thank you for the Commissioner and the Chairman. Allow me to speak. And as you can see on the screen, that this area is pretty much quite single residential property. And also, I got, may I submit that this picture to the Commissioner, is that possible?
Would he prefer to use the overhead to show everyone?
Yeah. I just got this zoning map from the city of Bakersfield, and I just make a circle in the radius of one-point-five miles, and I start beginning counting, how many commercial zone do we have it? It turned out to be about twenty-eight commercial zone in the radius of one-point-five miles, if I'm correct. And I'm just wondering that, since you already have the twenty-eight commercial zone, some of the commercial zone already have the shopping center in it, and some of them is already in the process of developing. So do you think, do we need additional twenty, do we need more shopping center? Do you really need more shopping center? My answer is no. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing no other speakers, before we move into the rebuttal period, does any Commissioner have a question for the public or staff on this item? Please remember, this is not a time to express any opinions on the matter, just ask questions. Commissioner Coleman, I see you.
Thank you. So for staff, because we're looking at very small drawings here, this little cutout on Wybelle Road, that's a single-family house that's not included in this development, is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner, that is correct.
And how does that get dealt with when they widen that road there in front of the commercial property? What happens in front of the residential property?
There is a condition on this project that complete streets policy be fully executed, so road improvements will be made in front of that. We refer to it as a notch, but there is a requirement that those road improvements extend the full length of the project length.
Doesn't that impede that property that they don't control?
It very way, it very well may, yes.
Okay. And the very top of the drawing, I don't guess that's the, there's another little nook or a little notch, what is that about? The very top of the drawing?
That I'm not sure of. I would ask the developer to...
I'm Freddie Porter. Strip along there used to be a canal or a ditch and was no longer used, so it's quit claim back to the property owners adjacent to it. And so that was just a little remnant, weird bump out there for the property configuration.
I'm a little, I'm a little, I'm trying to answer, ask this in a question form, because I'm also a comment, but yeah, I'm struggling a little bit with what's going on along that, up against the cul-de-sacs. There, it looks like this property line is just kind of cutting through there. Are there not residential lots there already in those cul-de-sacs? I follow the little yellow lines.
Yeah, the little yellow line is the edge of the old canal right of way.
I see.
And so those cul-de-sacs all butted up to the old canal.
They butted up to the canal?
And the canal is no longer there, yes.
All right. That's all the questions I have for now. Thank you. I have one more question. Has the, what's the name of the association, the Wybelle Road Action Group? And the property owner, have they, have you guys met?
Yes.
And you're not able to resolve any of these issues?
No, I've never met with them.
All right. Okay. So there's not been a meeting?
No.
Okay.
I just had one question for staff. One of the speakers addressed previous commission and council requests for zone changes, and I was tracking and I was reading, and what date was that? Was that on this property, and was that, what date were those? That wasn't in the staff report, I don't believe.
I would ask Principal Planner Steve Esselman, who prepared the report, to address that, please.
Chairman Gator, can you repeat the question?
There was mention of a previous request for zone change, I believe, on the property?
Yeah, I believe they said somewhere in like the early 2000s.
Okay, yeah, because all I saw in this report was just the annexation date, which was in the 90s, I believe, but...
Yeah, I guess I must have missed that.
Okay. Thank you. So, thank you. Okay, any other, oh, Commissioner Bell?
This is to staff. Kind of an unusual project, definitely an infill type of thing, a difficult lot. I see a lot of questions there. Has staff considered a PCD on this? Is C1 an unusual use? I know we do it on C2 a lot, is this, I know it holds us into this, into a little bit more than the staff's administration. Any recommendation there, please?
Yes, we did do some research, and there are a number of C1 PCD combining zones in the city, so this would not be unusual to request a PCD overlay. In fact, it may give both the Planning Commission and the residents an additional assurance that design standards are going to be maintained at the highest level through the imposition of the PCD overlay.
Thank you. Seeing no additional Commissioner questions, we will now move into a rebuttal period. Again, this rebuttal period provides an opportunity for those on each side of the item to provide five minutes of rebuttal comments to what the speakers on the opposite side have had to say. So, as we begin with those in favor of the project, we will provide five minutes for those in favor of the project to speak. Again, these rebuttal periods are five-minute total time, so I ask that if you plan to make rebuttal comments, please come forward, be succinct, and be respectful of other speakers as it is a five-minute total time, and we will stop the, cut the mic at five minutes. So, we will begin with those in favor of the project. So those in favor, please begin.
Good evening. My name's Mike Henson. I'm the owner of the project on Hosking we're talking about today. I also live in the Stone Creek neighborhood for fifteen years. We've had that property the same amount of years. We've had our business on there, which we had to relocate through the city. I've had a home on there that the city took down, you know, so I'm about, used it for everything I've could, you know, and held on to it, and cities come to us, and so we're just going with the plan. I've never met with the committee, but I live there, I don't plan on leaving that neighborhood. I drive it every day to work, I see what it needs, I see what we don't have. It's a half-highway, it's two lanes, there's no access for anybody to get there, there's no bike lane for kids, that's very dangerous. Then you got Panama, which is down there, which is congested nonstop. So yeah, we have a hotbed for kids in there with all those schools, but there's nowhere for them to go, you know? Then they end up buying things from illegal vendors, street sales. The people in that neighborhood want the convenience, they want the quality of life to improve, you know? They want to be, they want to be able to walk somewhere, go do something with their kids in that area. We don't have any of that, you know? It's an isolated dead zone, and it'd be nice to have, you know, restaurants, donut shop, barber, you know, healthcare, urgent care, things like that could be there that will help us as a community, you know, bring us all in there. The homeless, we've never had any homeless issue there till maybe three months ago, and that's because we were waiting on this process. So we've had some abandoned barns there, and they started building up there. So we finally got them out of there. Since then, it's never been an issue, so it's, we haven't had homeless, except one encounter. One other thing is, I don't think there was any rezoning on the property before, that was never attempted. It's just always been used as a fishing pond, a garden, you know, goats, we had goats and animals out there, we just kind of rolled with it, but now it's time, and that's what the community wants. We didn't go out and collect signatures or anything like that. I didn't know this was a petition or, you know, we had to do that, you know? It's pretty cut and dry. The city staff proposed it and agrees with it, and I hope you guys will follow suit and agree with them. I know it's a little different and unique, but it's what we need out there, you know, it's what the community wants. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Freddie Porter. Just wanted to try to hit a couple of the things real quick that they talked about. Mr. Henson has met with the owner on the house at the little bump out around the house, and at the time that they met, he said, you know, I'd be willing to work with you on the right-of-way there, you know, obviously it'd be something they'd have to purchase from him so he can build the road and work out all of those kind of issues. We did complete a conceptual layout to use for our study purposes, to make sure the building sizes, the parking layouts... building sizes, the parking layouts, the right-turn lanes, the driveways, everything fits just fine. They're all standard right-turn lanes, there's no reductions that are needed, they meet city traffic criteria. So that's not, not something that's a big concern from our end. Air quality, emissions were studied. There's a couple mitigation measures that are in the staff report that were pulled from that that address air quality impacts, so it's less than significant impacts. Traffic was also studied, and these are arterial, arterial streets, they're intended to be six lanes, you know, three lanes each side. So they're big, wide, busy roads, that's what they're intended to be. And there's a traffic signal at the intersection, there's crosswalks, there's lighting already there, there'll be more lighting in place, there'll be more sidewalk in place to keep people safe in the area. Let me see here. I think that covers about everything I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the black screen mean that our time is up? All right. I do believe we were running, the clock was running out, so I believe we will now move on to opposition, but I think we will wait until a small technical glitch is fixed. Please bear with us and be patient. If I could encourage everyone to find their seats again. We went a little bit more eight minutes than a five-minute break, but I won't tell anyone if you don't, yeah. You stopped it, okay. All right. I, we will reconvene the meeting at 7:10. I believe we still have 31 seconds for rebuttal comments for those in favor. So if a very succinct individual would like to provide comments, you are now welcome to do so. And we'll let them come up to the podium, and we'll start when you're up, if there's any other speakers. Okay. Thank you.
Could I just have the, Mike Henson, owner of the Hosking lot there, could I just have everybody in favor of the Hosking project stand up for me that's here tonight? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. 10 seconds, if anyone in favor wants to shout in support, not really, I mean, come to the microphone and identify yourself, but... Time, we will now provide an opportunity for those in opposition to the project to provide rebuttal comments to the conversation we've had tonight. Again, this is a five-minute total time, so if you'd like to speak, I'd recommend coming to the front row so that we can save time in transit, and otherwise, please be succinct and respectful of others so that everyone has an opportunity to speak, and please identify yourself and proceed.
David Polinsky. I'd like to answer your question you asked earlier about the previous zoning change. That was back in 2002 when it was submitted, and back 2003, 2004 when it went before this planning commission and the city council. The property, it's not the same property, it's the property located on the northwest corner, which now contains residential property. One of my questions I would bring up is, is there a legal issue for the city involved in 20 years ago making a decision about a similar zoning change, and today making, or I should say a recommendation decision, and today making a completely different recommendation, what that might mean? We also want to let you know that we have talked to the person living in the house along Wyble Road, that's that notch. She's actually the daughter of the owner of the property, she has a young child living there, and when we talked to her, she was very concerned. I think she might have even submitted a letter. I don't know how we verify if, I think her last name is Leon, if she has submitted a letter or not, but she was planning on doing so, expressing her concerns about the project, including what would happen to the front of her property should it be approved. And also, I haven't heard answers to some of the questions that we've asked. I would once again ask, why is the city staff providing a recommendation for approval for this zoning change when they didn't 20 years ago? Why hasn't cities, why did city staff state that there isn't commercial property or designated property in one half-mile when in fact we can see that there is? Thank you.
Thank you. Any others in opposition?
Dave Morrison, again. Mr. Coyle commented about that house that does not want to sell, and I couldn't really hear what your comment was. I don't know if I can ask him to say that again, or...
Well, one, thank you for promoting me to commissioner, I'm the planning director, but what I said was, there is a condition on the project that will require improvements along Wyble Road to be built to complete streets standards, and that includes that portion of Wyble Road in front of the property that we're referring to as the notch.
All right. Thank you. I see Mr. Henson has support here, which is good, but one question I have internally is, you saw how many people stood up that live in the area that we are opposing this project. I just wonder how many of his friends live in that general area also? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Jimenez, president of the RAG organization, and thank you for giving us a time to rebut. I've lived in this neighborhood for 16 years. We first came to Bakersfield from Los Angeles, it was, we said we're going to live here probably for the rest of our lives. It was a rural community, safety was good, there wasn't a lot of crime, beautiful homes where parents can raise their children, grandchildren, good schools, and the reason we started this organization was to protect our communities. Now, we are not against development, but we are against development in that area. It's a bad idea for the whole community involved. You're talking about families forever. There's a certain lifestyle that we enjoy living there in the southwest. There's plenty of commercial development all around Bakersfield. Please, when you make that decision, you're going to be affecting a lot of people's lives. Children going to school, grandchildren. There's more traffic, more noise, there's plenty of restaurants on Panama and Taft Highway. You've got plenty of gas stations, liquor stores, whatever you need. Please, I beg you, do not disrupt our lifestyle for our families and our children. Please, make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. 30 seconds remaining, if any last quick opposition comments. Seeing none, I will spare us 15 seconds of awkward silence and close the public hearing on this item, and return to commission for comments and action. Commissioners, comments, thoughts? Now you can give your opinions. Sorry, there's awkward silence now. Commissioner Coleman, want to start us off? All right.
Sure, thank you. This is opinion time?
This is opinion time.
Well, I have two, I have two thoughts on this project. One is, I struggle with that, that little notch in there, that one residential house. I think this is not a great project here for commercial zoning. The, there's no entitlement issue here, so the developer's not necessarily entitled to the commercial zone change, so I would like to see a better project presented here. This project with the budding up to the residential the way it does, and that notch for the house doesn't, doesn't set well with me. It's not like we need more commercial space, because there is commercial space across the street. On the other hand, I'll say to the homeowners group that something's going to get built there at some point, and right now, it's, it looks like it's ZONE R4, so somebody could come in there without your, without your input and build, you know, multifamily houses in there, so, so, you know, be prepared that at some point, something's going to get built on that lot. This project for me doesn't work, especially not to a C1 zone. I guess I don't have anything else to say about that, so...
Are there any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Bell?
So, a couple things. To staff, I understand why you approved it, I can see, I can see, not, I can't say directly, listen, this is, we need lots and lots of commercial out there, because literally to the east of it, there's going to be more commercial and mixed use and things of that nature. The irony of that is, those will be allowed big box, those will be allowed all types of other activity, and C1 will in fact suffer. C1 is, is community commercial. So in my view, I'm not totally opposed to the C1 at all, and in fact, if the neighborhood were greatly concerned, I could see a PCD overlay being an extremely important tool. That would limit the amount of square footage per unit, maybe the architectural control of it. That area, as it gets close to the 99 freeway, is earmarked, and we have been watching and seeing a lot of development coming our way and being reviewed by us, so we know that it's coming. And ironically too, you've got to understand, from our viewpoint, they're on arterials, so that means both Hosking and Wyble, those are meant for high-volume traffic. It's not exactly an area that's going to prohibit commercial, and so if commercial comes in, it needs to come in maybe more in a neighborhood manner. So those are, those are concerns that I have. I, we, I want to make sure that you understand this. This commission listens to its community. It is going to favor a lot of folks saying things like, we're not happy about this, but at the same time, we want to be sensitive to the general plan, and to the way development is done, and why it's done a certain way. So we can't ignore the applicant's desire to make a good use of a property that frankly, sir, is, that's a messy-looking little piece of property you got there. Difficult to develop, and you're going to have enormous frontage improvements, and you're going to have a lot of costs related to that project, especially if you're improving other sites. So with all that said, this is a difficult one for me, because I see both sides, and I wished, and still wish, that the two of you had gotten together and discussed this through. That is very, very much the way we want to see it, that we would like to see you communicating one with another, and no matter how the commission votes tonight, I would ask that you try and do that, please. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rudnick?
I agree with the other commissioners, it's a difficult situation. I think the folks in the neighborhood have a definite viewpoint, but I also see the viewpoint that something will get built there, and especially if it's an R4 designation, you're going to see a lot of intensive apartments, et cetera, and you'll see a lot of changes in your neighborhood with that. It's also an odd-shaped piece of land, and I think that is really conducive to a commercial development, especially being on the corner there. It's a very logical thing to be built. I do have an issue with the island or the cutout, or whatever you want to phrase it, and I think that's a really odd, cumbersome thing for that project, and in that vein, I would, I would look at possibly zoning the area south of that house to the commercial that the developer's requesting, but north, I would request that they get on board with the folks in the house and get something that's more homogeneous to both of their needs. I think that might be a good compromise to the situation. But it is going to get built, it is on a busy corner, it has a good window for commercial and/or multifamily, and I do see that it will, at some point in the near future, get built.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioner comments? Okay. I would just say, this is a complicated one. I think any time zone changes are involved, especially general plan zone changes, you know, it kind of, I think that the process is allowed because things change and the city changes, and we need to analyze those changes and react to those changes. I personally have a, it's hard in neighborhoods such as this in Bakersfield, where we have many adjacent parcels of C2 and C1 and CO that are vacant, putting more of that use into a neighborhood, but also understand that development, there's more to it than just this property works, that one doesn't, you know, it's a more complicated system. I agree with some of the other commissioner sentiments, that I think the general plan and zone change process is one that you're really asking a community, especially in a neighborhood like this, that's fully built up around it, to, to embrace and be a part of that neighborhood, and I think, I agree that I think a little community interaction, a little bit of dialogue would, would be very beneficial to this process, because I think the blanket of a C1 zone does give a lot of ambiguity as far as what, what can and cannot go in there, and so, yeah, I think this is a difficult conversation, but I think this is a public forum that's intended to have difficult conversations, so lucky us, but I, so in looking at this, I have a question for staff. Since this is a zone change, a change to the general plan, is this a quarterly, is this one of the quarterly meetings where we can change the general plan? This is just the only application that we had?
This is the only application during this cycle, yes.
Okay, so if we defer action on this, we're essentially pushing it out a quarter?
Out to December would be the next GPA zone change window.
Okay. Because I do, I kind of echo Commissioner Bell's sentiment that, you know, I do think we have mechanisms as a city to overlay a PCD zone, which, for members of the audience, that is a zone that requires a higher level of development review in the process, so that the community has a chance to see, you know, the landscape standards, how site access works, pedestrian access, what the buildings look like before it goes through the process and is built. It's intended for exactly cases like this, where there is a large community interest in what gets built there. However, I, yeah, I struggle, and I think we can keep talking about whether there needs to be more community conversation before this moves forward into that, and so I'm curious, I know, this is the bad part about being the last person to speak, but I, any other commissioner comments while I continue to formulate my thoughts would be appreciated. All right, seeing none, that's not an option. Are there any commissioners that would like to make a motion on this item? Commissioner Coleman?
So the other commissioners may be a little bit more eloquent than I am, but considering the amount of opposition to the project, and considering some of the site limitations and the zoning request, I'm going to make a motion to deny this general plan amendment zone change, number 19-0035.
Thank you. Commissioner Rudnick?
I would like to make a competing motion.
All right.
In, in reference to what I said prior, I, I would like to make a motion that we approve the zoning south of the, the cutout or island, and do the PCD overlay, so that it gives us some more input into how the eventual construction of it is, so that would be my, my comment.
Commissioner, or not commissioner, Mr. Iger? Can you?
So the, the second...
So the second motion would take priority unless it's a motion to continue. That would be the final one. But we would also need a second on Commissioner Coleman's motion to even vote on it. So I don't know if you want to ask if there's even a second or if we want a second Commissioner Rudnick's motion.
Understood. A question I have about Commissioner Rudnick is, are we able to approve a partial application for a partial property?
No.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, okay. But so now we're back to one motion. I think, are there any other motions or would we like to second?
I'm having a hard time. If we can't second Rudnick's motion, oh boy.
Are we able to second Commissioner Rudnick's motion if it doesn't in fact meet the obligation of the city?
No, somebody can make another motion.
So I'll make a competing motion that we approve a C1 zoning as applicant has asked with a PCD overlay. That's it?
I'll second Commissioner Coleman's motion.
Commissioner Coleman, okay.
We can vote on the motion to deny.
We can now vote on the motion to deny. Commissioners, please cast your vote.
Commissioner Cater for and Coleman for the project with Commissioners Bell and Bowers against. And Commissioner Rudnick abstained.
Is it time for sudden death? Do I need to, no, just kidding. So we're two and two. And so the motion does not pass, right?
So the motion to deny does not pass.
Okay. So then can I make a second motion? Can we? I do think-
Well, Commissioner Bell has a standing motion as well.
I thought, oh, for the PC, for the C1. Okay. May I have a second for Commissioner Bell's motion to approve as a C1 with PCD overlay?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Bowers? Commissioners, please cast your vote.
Commissioners Cater and Coleman against. Bell and Bowers for. And Commissioner Rudnick abstained.
I don't think this has happened on my, I would like to make a third motion, which I believe is that we do not make a determination on this, but we defer it to the next zone change cycle and provide applicants the opportunity to interact with the community, kind of do the work of casting the vision and getting community support, and then defer it to our next zone change commission hearing.
So the motion would be to refer the item back to staff for renoticing and bring back at the next general plan amendment cycle?
Yes. With, you know, with a strong recommendation that the applicant and the community have a conversation about the future of the property.
I'd second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Rudnick. Commissioners, please cast your vote.
Motion passes.
You're clear on that motion? Thank you. That concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda. We're now moving on to new business, which Mr. Coyle, I believe you have a presentation for us?
I do. Mr. Chair, Dana, if you could bring up the last PowerPoint presentation, please?
And can we just ask the people leaving to try to remain quiet so we can finish the meeting?
Well, commissioners, it's been a long evening, and I will not prolong this unnecessarily. We have an update on some major commercial and residential projects in the city. Because this is my first attempt at giving your commission this report, details are a little scant, but with your input, we can always improve these development project updates for your commission. So we have 10 commercial projects and four residential projects, and the four residential projects are multifamily. So stay tuned. The first project is the City Lights Mall, East Hills Mall. You can see that over 337,000 square feet of mixed-use shopping on a 36.41 acre site. There was an article in the August 30 edition of the Bakersfield Californian that said the city manager's office is continuing to communicate with prospective buyers. So that's the update on that project. Bakersfield Commons, we have a number of uses that have already been approved, shopping center, office park, residential, and a hospital on 97.22 acres. And we are waiting on plans to be submitted to the building division. Next is Gateway Project at Hosking and South H, over 600,000 square feet of mixed-use shopping center on 80 acres. Preliminary plans were submitted to planning. Comments were returned on that preliminary plan, and we are awaiting revisions to the plan. Next is the Point, 36,500 square feet mixed-use shopping center on approximately 30 acres. Again, we are waiting on plans to be submitted to the building division. Next is Stockdale and Buena Vista. This should be relatively fresh in your memories. More than 72,000 square feet of mixed-use shopping center on just under 14 acres. Plans have been submitted to the building division for construction. On the northeast corner of Stockdale and Allen, we have more than 85,000 square feet of mixed-use shopping approved on a little more than 10 and a half acres. Oops, sorry. But three buildings have been constructed on that site. And we are waiting on plans to be submitted to the building division for the other buildings. Now I'm continuing to drive the train backwards. The shops at Riverwalk, 35,000 square feet of retail, office, and restaurant use on just under five acres. This is currently under construction. Artisan Square at Brim Hall and Allen, two buildings are currently under construction. At the Valley Plaza Mall, we have, two buildings have been constructed. We are waiting on plans to be submitted to the building division for a third building. And the last of the commercial projects is at Highway 178 in Comanche. Two buildings have been constructed. I believe those are the Taco Bell and the Shell. And we are waiting on plans to be submitted to the building division for other buildings. Now moving into some of the larger residential, and as I mentioned, these are all multifamily. On the northeast corner of Harrison, Buena Vista, 144 dwelling unit apartment complex, waiting on plans to be submitted to building division. Next, a 28 dwelling unit apartment complex on 18th Street, we are waiting on revised plans to be submitted to the building division for compliance with new building code updates. On the southeast corner of Allen and Reyna, we are waiting on plans to be submitted to the building division for a 304 dwelling unit apartment complex. On Old Farm in Noriega, 176 dwelling unit apartment complex, again, waiting on plans to be submitted to the building division. And finally, oops. Finally, for residential projects, Chester Tower at Chester and 18th. There are 40 dwelling units being proposed on floors three through seven of the building. Plans have been submitted to the building division for tenant improvements. Those plans have been reviewed, but we are waiting on the applicant to make some additional revisions to the plans. So that concludes the commercial and residential projects. One other announcement that I would like to make is with regards to the Metropolitan Bakersfield Habitat Conservation Plan incidental take permit, the city is excited to announce that they have received a two-year extension of the MBHCP/ITP through August 31 of 2021. Development that causes permanent ground disturbance is required to pay a fee which is used to purchase habitat in natural areas of Kern County. The approved extension provides coverage for the development community under the city's permit, eliminating the need for developers to apply for individual take permits through the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. The city plans to have a new Bakersfield Habitat Conservation Plan in place prior to the expiration deadline. So that concludes my project update for the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Are there any commissioner comments? All right, Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you very much for that plan. I was a little disappointed that nothing more has been done on Bakersfield Commons. That thing was approved a couple of years ago. They don't have, they don't have any building plans in the building yet?
Not yet, but I can tell you that we have had multiple conversations with the hospital. And if I were to hazard a guess, I would say that the hospital is probably going to be ready for construction first.
Wow, I'm surprised about that. Okay. I know we can't make them build, but this thing was approved a while ago, and I think that the community at large expected more to be done in the commons by now. So I don't know, if you're having a conversation with a developer, I would say that to them. The other thing that I would like to comment on is the multifamily housing. It's great to see that, you know, the apartment complexes moving forward. And personally, I would just encourage us to try to do whatever we can to, you know, to make that process as smooth as possible for these builders so that they can get those things built because we're in dire need of, you know, these apartments and that kind of thing. And I really glad to see something being done downtown. We're building some 40 units. That's just awesome. So I didn't know about that, but I'm really glad to hear it. So that's the end of my comments on that. So thank you very much for the update.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. It's great to see, step back from, just kind of get a great overview of the many exciting things happening in our community. So thank you. And I will, do I need to return and file when we vote on it? Okay.
I believe the recommendation is to receive and file the update. Yes, sir.
I recommend that Mr. Coyle presents every planning, just kidding, no, just kidding. Not that tonight. We'll just make the recommendation that we said, receive and file, yes. Commissioners, please cast your votes. Yep, one more time. It's not letting any of us vote. Oh, there we are. I don't know.
Motion passes.
All right. Commissioner comments? Are there any commissioner communications? Oh, are there comments about the next meeting and whatnot?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there is.
Just to get home or anything, yeah. Sorry about that, yeah.
The next planning commission meeting will be held on Thursday, October 3.
Oh, little fall break for-
Yes, at 5:30 PM here in council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Now, are there any commissioner comments? Seeing none, I will adjourn the meeting at 7:44. Have a great evening.